Call the meeting to order. I think we start with my report.
Um, well, first you have to request.
Oh, does anybody want to remove something from the consent agenda?
Nothing, thank you.
So.
Nothing.
I will remove seven A. And B.
Of course.
Of course.
Joy. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you went around. No, I'm good. Because I can't fill my highlights.
Okay, so then we'll do a motion to approve the order of items.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. And at long last, it's time for.
It's time for my report.
It says I go first, okay.
Oh, yes, you go first. This is presidents. No, go ahead.
Okay.
Presidents before directors.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, thanks to my fellow trustees for giving me the credit for this venerable post. And thanks for your kind words at the last meeting memorialized as always by Lyndon. Thank you, Lyndon, for your efforts.
Thank you, Lyndon.
Uh, thanks for your trust in me guys. And I guess since this is my first one, I'll wax eloquent for a moment and just say that the library, to me and all of us, is the center of this community. And I think it's great that we've all been entrusted to, you know, safeguard that. I was here the other day on a snow day and it was completely mobbed. The parking lot was bombed and it's just, it's just so nice to be able to be involved in this. Remembering that the, we have a wonderful building, we have a generous community providing us funds, but the one thing that keeps this place going and all the employees.
Absolutely.
Keep the capital and it's just fantastic the people that are here, so. That would be the president's report. I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Well, congratulations, new president Shane Sprentle. Thank you for stepping up and sharing your leadership with us. Excited for this new era. Like Taylor Swift. Well, my first announcement for the night is that the youth media awards were announced on January 27th at the American Library Association's LibLearnX conference. The youth media awards are like the Oscars for children's books. Um, and we have some samples of some of the award winners here in the center of the table. The two big awards are the Newberry and the Caldecott. The Newberry winner is The First State of Being written by Erin Antrautakelli. And Judy Vanna-White is gonna show that to us tonight.
Nice.
And then the Caldecott winner is a book called Chooch Helped. We don't have that one here, actually.
Uh, we've got another.
Caldecott, oh, Caldecott Honor.
Caldecott Honor.
The illustrations and kids' books are so great.
Yes.
Noodle kind of money.
The Caldecott is the, is for the most distinguished American picture book for children, so. We have collections out in the youth department for both of those medals. We have all the books back to the very beginning of the winners of both of those awards. Um, and of course, all the other award winners too. There's a whole litany of award winners for youth media, so. It's exciting time. The winter reading challenge wrapped on January 31st. This is the colder version of summer library program. Um, we asked patrons to track the day, the number of days that they did some reading and the number of books that they logged. A hundred and seventy-eight patrons participated in the winter reading challenge this year. And they logged 2,118 days of reading. Five hundred and nine books. And 108 of the participants completed the full challenge, which is about 60% of the people that signed up, so.
Wow. How did that compare to the year prior?
Uh, it was, uh, 46% last year, so. Up about 10.
Yeah, good job. Good, good, yes.
So that continues to be very successful. Uh, we're doing a lot of staff training. You mentioned the, the great employees here. We're doing a lot of staff training at this time of year. You've probably heard us talk about our monthly staff training and our department tours that we've been doing for the last couple of years. Our monthly staff training is a drop-in session that's very casual, lasts like maybe 15 minutes. We do it a couple of times a week, once a month, and Catherine coordinates this. So she picks timely topics and works with other library staff to provide this training. This month, since we've done so many requests for proposals and we always report to staff, there is an RFP out and we awarded one last night at the board meeting. She decided to do this training on our request for proposal process. Hi, Keith. Just to teach staff that we do have a quite an elaborate process. We do a lot of vetting when we select our vendors. Um, so they would know what we're talking about when we talk about our pages. Um, the department tour this month is in circulation. Um, and then I wanted to brag a little bit that we have two library staff who are presenting at Spring Institute, which is the Michigan Library Association's Youth Services Annual Conference. Killian Weston and Jaya Johnson are both presenting at a program on, I think on video gaming, um, programs. So that's very exciting. That's in April. And the Midwest Collaborative for Library Services, also known as MCLS, which is one of the consortia that we're a part of, is holding a learning cohort about artificial intelligence. And I am really trying to keep abreast of AI and just learn about it and figure out how we should respond to it. So I asked if a staff person would participate in that and Richard Quong, who is one of our full-time folks in IT, is going to participate in this learning cohort. So I'm excited to see what he brings back from that. So that's just a little roundup of some of the staff training that we've been doing. We do spend money on that. The fronts have given us a nice bequest for staff training, so we're making use of that. Um, as you, I think you are all aware that our library design project is kicking off next week on Wednesday with a meeting at 3:00 PM with our designers from C2AE. I established a very small core team that will work closely with the architects and designers. This will be kind of facilitation team, so a group to decide when we're gonna meet, who's gonna meet, where it's, when the meetings will happen, uh, who we need to communicate with. Uh, that team will be Catherine and myself. Joy will be representing the trustees. And then Brooke Hoskins and Lauren Katoni Ellis, who are the chairs of the Staff Committee for Spaces. So again, that'll be a very small team that will just sort of facilitate things. I want you to be aware that you guys will be involved at many, many points in the progress or the process. I have a no surprises policy when it comes to the trustees, so I don't want, you're not gonna walk in one day and see like all new chairs and tables. So I just wanna assure you that even though you're not on that core team, you will still be highly, um, informed and involved along the way. So I'm excited to kick off that, that process. And that is what I have to report.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, can I get a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda? Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. And now it's the call to the public. And there are so many of us here in the public. Who wants to go first?
Yeah, and big news is that our tenure is coming to an end, um, with the new fiscal year rollover. Uh, we are getting three new members of SOC, Anna Pellicchuck and Nicole Gillies, who have both been on it before, and Jane Bursey and Edmund, who is doing it for her first time. And that is.
Well, thank you for being serving on it, both of you.
But, uh, before that, our last piece of duty is going to be planning a luncheon-type deal for the staff. Partially because it's National Libraries Month and we just wanna celebrate the staff. And partially as a, I won't say replacement, but a alternative to New Holiday Party.
February's the month, or March? Is it March? Good job.
Yeah.
Good.
Very nice. You guys do great, Chad.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Nope, we're good on that. He's not public today.
Is there any unfinished business anybody wants to address? New business, grounds maintenance, snow RFP?
All right, let me get to this. Speaking of snow, right? Oh, my goodness, yes. All right, so the grounds maintenance and snow removal RFP, this is one of three services that we bid out regularly every three years. It's this vending services and our periodical subscription service. So this is just our general practice. We did post this in November, which seems like so long ago. It was posted on BidNet Direct. This was the third RFP process we've gone through BidNet Direct and we think it's been really great. Makes communication really easy. We think we get better, um, response. So we've been very happy with that, yeah. We had a mandatory pre-bid walkthrough on December 3rd and the deadline for proposals was December 20th. And all the proposals are in the center of the table there in case you couldn't look at them. The objective of this RFP was to select an experienced firm to take care of the library's very beautiful campus, which is a point of pride for us, so we wanna pick somebody good. Um, and this is lawn maintenance, tree pruning, um, edging, mulching, and also snow removal and de-icing of the parking lot. Um, we contract with a couple other firms to do other parts of the library's campus. What is it? American Lawn and Tree Arborist do most of our tree care, especially if we have some sick or ailing trees. And Golden Welsh, of course, does an amazing job on our flower beds and flower gardens, so we keep them around for that. Um, so 57 companies downloaded our RFP from BidNet, but then only 11 came to the mandatory walkthrough. And then we received 10 proposals. And as I said, they're all there if you care to look at them. We always do a thorough review of the proposals individually, so this team was me, Catherine, and Tom. And then we fill out that analysis sheet that you see in the board packet and then we come together and we talk about it. Catherine compiles all of our comments into that analysis sheet. Two of the companies that submitted proposals, Great Oaks and T's Outdoor Services, did not attend the mandatory walkthrough and so we didn't consider them any further. Um, and then we have to narrow down the, the field of choices, so we focused on the completeness of proposals, the size of the company, and their experience, and their proximity to the library, because that, that came into play in one of the instances. Some proposals were priced in a way that we felt didn't accurately reflect the workload. It was either too low or too high, so we eliminated those folks from the pack as well. Um, so that narrowed us down to Timberland Landscape and Professional Ground Services. And Catherine proceeded to check references for those two companies. Timberland Landscape is a very well-established company with about 50 to 60 employees. Um, they definitely have the ability to do the work that we need them to do. Their rates were a little bit on the high side and their references were positive, but they weren't outstanding. Professional Ground Services is also a very well-established company, a little bit bigger with 90 employees. Also the means to do the work we need them to do. They're part of a family of companies called the Professional Group and they provide facility services and supplies for all kinds of commercial properties. Their price was a little bit below average for grounds maintenance, a little bit above for snow removal and de-icing, so it kind of evened out. And it was within the budget that we have, um, that we're budgeting for already, so that was a good point. Their references were really glowing. Uh, one person said that they were pretty darn good with no issues whatsoever. Um, and another reference, who is an operations specialist at a real estate management firm, stated that they are always the company that they recommend whenever a new property is acquired by them, so. Yeah, that's a good, a good reference. Also, Professional Ground Services is, has a Pontiac Field Office, um, which is apparently very close to the library, so they could be nearby in a pinch. Uh, which this last week, since I had to call our snow removal company a couple of times to get them to come out, would be nice to know, uh, that they were very close by. Um, Professional Ground Services included snow removal services at both the seasonal rate and the per push rate. We did some research to figure out the number of times it snows in the year and crunched some numbers and did some math and determined that it really wasn't a material difference to go with the per push rate. Besides that, where it happens in our budget cycle, if we had to make any budget amendment amendments, that would be sort of, um, sloppy and messy, so we just decided that the seasonal rate would be the more, um, firmer ground version to choose. So, um, therefore, administration and facility services are aligned in recommending Professional Ground Services as our new lawn maintenance and snow removal company using the seasonal rate. And if you approve, there's an action. And Tom and I are happy to answer any questions you might have about this proposal process.
The prior company was Great Oaks, wasn't it? Okay, and they did not come for a walkthrough and they were, um, not there the very last snow we had, so that you had to push to get them.
They thought that we, they looked at our website the night before and thought we were closed.
They also did not include a snow bid.
That's right. They only bid on law, uh, lawn maintenance. They didn't bid on the snow removal.
But presently, they do have a snow bid with us. Or contract with us.
Is it going to wrap up at the next fiscal year? It's gonna be through April?
Yeah, their, their contract ends March 31st, so we'll have this new company start April 1st.
Okay, gotcha.
I was very, personally very impressed with the detail that was put forth. That, you know, the guys had to be this high and it had to be this far away.
Oh, and the, I know.
I mean, I think we all wish our, our, uh, groundskeepers would.
I know.
Would buy by those very strict codes that.
Yeah, it was actually Hugo's, uh, parting gift to us, when he wrote all the specs.
That was, um. Anyway, I, I hope that they can keep to all of our specs.
They certainly know what we want.
Anybody got any other questions or comments? There's a motion on page 34 at the bottom, if anybody wants to read it.
Does that motion, um, I notice it doesn't include that you mentioned the, that you wanted to go with the seasonal versus the push. Did you want that stated in the motion?
Sure.
But let me ask you this question. That could be changed on a yearly basis, correct? And we have them for three years?
Yeah, I guess it could. I don't know.
Because if you would only be reflecting then, that would probably only reflect next year or, or you probably would reflect three years if you put that specific thing in. I don't know.
I would leave it out.
I would too.
You just have the discretion.
Yeah, just in case you wanted to change it, in case we see Farmer's Almanac. Says, you know.
Or just Mike Judy.
She's gonna stand up.
She will too.
I will, yes, absolutely.
But Judy, why don't you begin?
I move to approve awarding the grounds maintenance and snow removal bid to Professional Ground Service 719, Griswold Street, Suite 2100, Detroit, Michigan, 48226.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed.
Great, thank you. So our next, uh, I will notify them tomorrow morning and I'll notify everyone else that they, uh, did not, uh, win the bid. And then Tom will reach out to them and schedule a meeting and we'll have him come out and go over all those details in the RFP specs. And we'll move forward.
Good.
Great, thank you.
So sick time and PTO policy.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, you all have probably heard about the Earn Sick Time Act, which has been in the news because we don't know if it's gonna be a law on Friday or not. But this is a, a new law that imposes requirements on Michigan employers. It requires nearly all employers to give some sick time to nearly all employees. There are some definitions of, um, what employers are included. And I think that's one of the things that's under debate right now. But we are qualified as a large employer under this law, therefore we are subject to it. So the law says that employees shall accrue a minimum of one hour of paid earned sick time for every 30 hours worked, but should not be entitled to use more than 72 hours of paid earned sick time per year unless the employer selects a higher limit. Uh, currently, there is no limit on how many used, unused hours can roll over as part of this law, year to year. Um, and employees would not be paid unused sick time upon separation from their employer. Um, so the library has 17 positions that are classed into eight salary grades. And in addition to compensation, those grades also determine the benefits that they receive. So currently, grades three through eight get paid time off as a benefit. And I should clarify that, um, we are an employer that puts our paid time off into separate buckets. So we have vacation, sick time, personal business time, emergency time, birthday time, a couple of floating holidays, and your birthday, if you pay time off. And it's prorated by whether you're full-time, 30 hours, or 20 hours. So it's a complex web. Um, this lot, so when I say PTO or refer to paid time off, I'm, I'm referring to that umbrella of types of time.
And this doesn't change the, those buckets, right?
Not at all, no. So prior to this law going into effect, we had been talking about the possibility of giving some paid time off to the classifications of employees that don't currently receive it. We have the highest turnover in those, um, classes of employees. And, you know, we, uh, we always tell people in the wintertime especially, if you're sick, stay home, don't pass your germs around. And so this would then give people incentive to stay home if they're being paid, um, to stay home because they're sick. So the managers are very supportive of giving these folks paid time off. Where am I in my list here?
The paid parental leave, you have.
Yeah, so I'm proposing that the employees in grades one and two would receive sick time accrued at the same rate as 20-hour employees in grade three, which is a little bit higher rate than what the law is requesting. Uh, this would be four hours per month instead of the one hour per 30 hours worked. Um, this would be administratively easier because we're already accruing time. We have it figured out for that rate. And honestly, I'd like to do this whether or not this law passes or not. Um, there are some other requirements of this law, like we, there are very specific uses for this kind, for this time. Illness of yourself, illness of a family member, um, attending a meeting at a child's school for a certain reason. So there's a little bit more than just sick time. And there's a, a poster that's available through the, um, it's Leo. I can't remember what the Leo stands for.
Legal.
We will post that and let people know that they can take time off for these reasons.
So my, I have a couple of questions, but what is grades one and two? Is that part-time people?
Yeah, there's part-time people in the other grades too, but grades one and two is clerical assistants, which are folks who mostly work at the desk. Our library monitor, which is a person who, um, helps out with security, for lack of a better term, pages and subs.
Okay, and are those all part-time or some of those are full-time?
No, they're all part-time.
Yeah, so this, in English, what this thing does is you get nine sick days a year. So if you said four hours per month, that only would be eight. You seem to be too, a couple days short.
Oh, okay. So maybe we do have to adjust that, okay.
But, um, I, you know, this is, I'm on this board. I've got my company. We got my church, my country club. Everybody's, I mean, it is what it is. Nobody knows what we're doing. I think what's gonna happen here is by, by Friday, the legislature will either cut a deal. My, my personal guess is they're gonna postpone it, and then we won't do anything, or maybe we'll make a change, TBD.
I'd like to make the change.
Yeah, to the six days, in English, six days.
Yeah, six days, yeah, 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 yeah.
I think four hours a month makes sense. I think, I agree with you to do it. It, is that what you're suggesting, still with that versus, so six versus nine? But accruing it four hours a month?
Yes.
So it's 48 hours total.
Yes, we're exactly.
Okay. I think it's smart, especially when you've just finished the classification and compensation data, to look at what your, um, where you have the greatest turnover, when you're looking at what benefits can we provide to retain versus training folks and then having them leave. So you've invested time and then they leave, so I, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. I would agree that maybe we just do consider doing it before legislature does or doesn't do. I mean, they're gonna do or not do for how long? Who knows?
Turnover costs us money.
Exactly, exactly. And I, I think if it's something that we believe in and, you know, you've got the data behind you, I, I'm in full support of that.
The Personnel Committee, Joan and I agreed as well.
Well, there you go.
That power.
One wrinkle is if this does go into effect, we're gonna have to go pretty quick. We'll have to approve something at the next meeting. Because it doesn't, we need to delineate all this stuff.
Right, right.
If the current one doesn't, then that's all fine, we'll just.
Yeah, like your phrase of provisional policy until we can redo the employee handbook.
Okay, so we wouldn't do the action now because that talks about the act and the X, not official, yeah?
That's true. I don't know, what do you think Shane should be?
I think the motion should, I think we all think we should do this regardless of what happens.
Right.
So maybe we just say, I approve the provisional employment policies and don't say the rest of it until such time as the employee handbook is updated.
Okay.
I'll, 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 I'll make that motion. I approve these.
Do you want me to talk about the paid parental leave?
You wanna do both of us? Sure.
Okay.
And actually, as, you can't give the motions.
President can.
Yeah.
That's great. You don't have to read again. You always gave me the hard ones.
Annual meeting is, uh, well, we don't have an annual meeting, but, um, the motion, when we have a closed-door session, you may, but, um, you can only say that there is a motion. Sorry.
I'm not making any motions. That's my problem.
So when we get to that point, question about how we then would enact this with payroll and it, would, that would have to be through the township?
No, we track our paid time off independently from the township. They do the payroll, that, the paying out of the funds and the taking out of taxes and all of that, but we, we manage our own paid time off.
Okay.
There is a weird little overlap, which is the next part of this, um, paid time off that I'm talking about, which is the paid parental leave. Because the township is our FMLA administrator and coordinator. Um, and for full-time employees, they also manage the short and long-term disability. So for full-time employees, the township does have a little bit more to say, or not that, but, um, more administration oversight.
Okay.
But paid time off, we track ourselves.
Okay.
And to be clear, if you're already getting paid time off, you don't get, you don't have to give people anymore, as long as they get. So nine PTO days qualifies, but they are allowed to use it for all these special reasons. It's a big mess.
Well, the paid parental leave is another thing that I had been talking about adding to our, um, benefits package. And earlier last month, um, the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees adopted a paid parental leave policy. And the HR benefits, uh, and coordinator contacted me afterwards. Um, Elizabeth Parrott contacted me to say, hey, we just did this and because we have this overlap in, um, administration, she suggested maybe we wanna adopt this as well. So I frankly cribbed their paid parental leave policy. I told her that I was going to do that and adopted it to match the library. Um, for instance, at the township, they made it a 120-hour, um, leave time, which is three weeks. But they're on a 40-hour work week. They have, you know, some fire people work on 24-hour shifts, so on police work 12-hour shifts. So I adopted it to be 120, 112.5 because we have a 37 and a half hour work week here. But essentially, you get three weeks paid time off, and this is a separate bucket from all those other buckets that I mentioned. So it wouldn't, um, take down those, those other buckets. So you get three weeks paid time off, then you go on, um, short-term disability. And then if you need more time beyond that, you would break into your own sick or vacation time. So that's how this paid parental is working.
Very, very generous, because typically you have to use sick time first.
Yep, exactly. Um, again, these benefits don't cost the library anything because we're already bu- uh, budgeting for, uh, people's hours. But I think that people feel cared for and it's a good way to help them out. Um, and I included the paid parental leave policy here, so you could read that. Um, if you have any questions or wanna talk more about it, I'm happy to do so.
I read it. I liked the part in the, in the middle there. It says you don't have to be the biological parent, which I thought was a nice addition. And then it says you only get it once every 24 months. So can't be a serial adopter.
Right. Space them out.
Anybody got any questions, comments?
I think it's a good idea as well.
Great, thank you for your support of these good benefits for employees. We got some babies coming down the pipes. I know it's gonna get used.
Okay, so then, does anybody wanna make the motion on page 44 as we discuss the?
Sure, I can do it. I approve these provisional employment, employment policies and adopt the paid parental leave policy uh, until such time as the employee handbook is updated to incorporate these changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much. I'm excited to share this with staff.
So next on my list is the stuff removed from the consent agenda, which we all know where we're going.
Seven A, everyone's favorite. It was short this time, did you guys notice that?
Yes.
You said you were gonna do that, so it's page 12. You said you were gonna do that, so it's page twelve, there's the check to envision where, I don't remember who that is.
That is the company that manages, they manage all kinds of things, our self-checkouts, the um not the AMH, our RFID pad readers. We have some software that they use, there's a whole bunch of things that they um we buy from them.
Mostly circulation tools that plug into the library system.
And we have like an annual subscription or an annual licensing contract with them.
On the page thirteen, the authors unbound agency, I saw that friends were helping support this, what what's the interaction between us and the friends on this?
Uh, well, they already gave us the money, it's coming out of the gift fund, so they we asked them for the money for this and.
So are we sharing the cost or is this just?
Nope, they paid for it. They gave us the money, we put it into our gift fund checking account and then we write the checks out of that account.
Okay, oh, I see gift fund, I missed that. What's principal life insurance company do for us?
Uh, they have, they give us a short and long-term disability income insurance for part-time folks. So it's a nice benefit we can offer for some part-time people.
And mobile lease city of Southfield?
Uh, the scooters.
Is it, I saw it was, is it, cause that seems like less money than I was expecting.
Um, it I, yeah, it's about what?
Four fifty on this on the register, or is that what it is per month?
Per month, yeah.
I need new scooters?
Mm-hmm.
I remember renting a fall. Oh, I don't remember seeing them.
I thought I was gonna get one, you don't have to, you don't have to be, have to use them, you just can use them, I'm gonna do it.
They get used a lot.
Could you let us know when that happens?
Yeah, we'll set it on that.
I'm I'm really glad they're being used.
Yes, we did, yeah, people miss them when they were all broken.
Right.
Right, I'm really glad. And they come out every month, I think, and service them?
I think that was the way to go, that was a smart idea.
Yeah.
I think it's every three months.
Every three months, okay, quarterly.
They were just shared all of day.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'm stepping B, page seventeen, that's our budget. Um, you know, we're eighty-three percent of the way through the year and we're looking pretty good, I gotta say, look at library services under expenditures, only seventy-six percent. So I was quite pleased with this. Um, the only thing we were above was professional services down there on the bottom, hostages.
Hostages, yes, I know.
We should think about that, but and then projects were really, we had two million in the budget and we're spending five seventy.
Projects is always, you know, that's where that capital improvement projects come from and because we didn't move forward with the drainage improvement project yet, or maybe ever.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's underspent, that one.
And if you go to page nineteen, you'll see the amount in the general fund, which is the highest since it's I can remember ever seeing it, something we gotta keep in mind. How was it, anybody else have anything on those?
What you said, keep keep in mind, what do you um?
At some point, I can't remember when in the cycle, we're gonna ask the taxpayers whether we're gonna take the full mileage.
I think by that time, we'll have started spending out some projects, right? The spaces project and the beautification project.
Well, there's also the opportunity to pay the the parking lot that we've been putting off for years, so.
Yes.
Cause of the water remediation. Judy's.
So Margaret, nothing else, can I get a motion to approve the items removed from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Great.
Other?
Other.
Other, other.
Um, I we wanna talk about the uh building a grounds committee meeting that didn't happen.
Yeah.
And the the township's approval of the project, but if we say it's for landscaping and beautiful, what is it, like educational purposes or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't really, thank you for noticing that, but what is that all about?
That that was.
I'm confused.
Well, that was the whole point of what the main thing we were gonna talk about. And Joe Christopher could explain it much better than I can, but essentially, I think the township doesn't want us to, want it to appear that we're having anything to do with the stormwater system. And so calling in a drainage improvement project and indicating that it's, you know, tying into that system somehow. They don't like that, so they were asking us to call it something different and then they would approve it.
Or said differently, Eric didn't want, our sense is that they don't, if they say we approve it for your drainage and then it winds up backing up the neighbors, now they're gonna get stuck on the hook for it. This was like a, just a, some lawyer somewhere decided this was a great idea.
That's how I read it, or.
On the flip side, it does have a lot of educational purposes, cause it is a dry bed, it is a wet bed, um you're gonna have a lot of flora and fauna, you're gonna have wildlife, depending on what is in there, you'll have insects, you could have, you know, a lot of courses. Talking about that, even just the choice of plant material. Um, so in that sense, it certainly it could be an educational pond.
You know, our thinking was maybe not to approve that up or down and wait for the next building and grounds committee, but do you wanna get people to sense where your head is at on this?
Yeah, Tom and I have talked a lot about this and we are kinda thinking of scrapping the ditch, as I call it. If you recall, the second part of this project was to install a pump in that pit that floods all the time. To cap that pipe off and install a pump in that. We definitely wanna proceed with that because uh we all think that that will solve the flooding problem. Um, the basin, it's it's kinda questionable. As time goes on and it becomes more of a, I don't know, a pain and thinking about it, I just, I don't know if it's if we even need to do it. We definitely need to redo the landscaping in that area.
Well, and I think that's one of the things that we have a problem with, because I did walk that and if you walk along the, you know, I don't do directions, but if you walk towards telegraph right against the wall, you're, it's muck. It is just so damp and those those shrubs are so overgrown and they shouldn't be right a butt to the building because that's where all the water is just forcing itself in to water them, so they should be further away. And we could also probably put something right against the building to um like shade, like a French drain to wake that away.
Yes, I think that would be very smart.
So, yeah, so I think that there's there's certainly logistically things that we can do to temper some of the issues that we're having, but it is just, don't wear good shoes, don't wear stilettos, cause you'll be.
It's swampy, it's very.
It's swampy and it's mucky and um and so those plants obviously are thriving, they must like wet roots, but um it's when you now, when you look at it, it's just covering some of the most beautiful parts of the building. You just don't see the windows and it's it's all overgrown, it was never taken care of, it should have been cut way back, but it was also planted too close to the building because they grew so big, they just kept growing. So um, yeah, I think that we can certainly mitigate that issue.
Yeah.
Um, by just changing things, I would like to see the um daffodil glade at least one more year, cause it's, and we can put more daffodils back, but the glade is so beautiful, but then let's start, do that.
Yeah, okay.
Before we decide to do or not do the ditch, can we meet again with that gentleman? I mean, I guess I'm confused, cause I thought we had a situation where there was a calculation of the amount of rainwater that sometimes can form in a heavy rainstorm. And that amount of rainwater exceeds what can actually go into the drain and therefore the retention basin was required. So now I'm hearing that we don't need a retention basin and some pump would fix it, so I guess I would just like to understand that better, so.
Sure.
I, yeah, I mean.
There was no intention of doing a decision here, it's just we'll do a building and grounds meeting, we'll get the expert back in, we'll talk about it.
Okay. Okay, that would be great if we could do this, I just wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I think what probably would make sense too, or would help in um our confusion, cause I I agree. Um, if we could also say like, we're always planning on doing the the um pump. And you know, so like step one, two, three, four, if we don't have to do two and three, great, I I don't, I don't know which ones correlate to the other. But if we don't do the ditch, then what does that mean?
Right.
But if we do the pump and we don't need to do the ditch, but we have to create a moat.
Right.
Around the building of some sense and you know.
Exactly, I thought the whole, the city was saying to us, hey, we don't want you to start increasing the amount of flow into our pipes. So therefore you need to be able to retain more water on the property.
Right.
So I guess I don't fully understand anymore, so that's, that would be great if we can.
Okay.
If we have a pump, where where's the water going?
Going, yes.
Was my, was my question, yeah.
Where's it pumping to? Yes.
Where's it accumulating and then where's it pumping to, I think, is.
Right. Exactly.
And if if we don't do the ditch, then what what else would we do?
And I guess I'm curious, is the process is what, you know, our first meeting with the township sounded okay and then we had to add more work and now it's changed completely, so it's done a complete one eighty from.
This is a result of of when he had to go back to the township, right?
Correct.
Yes. Yes, remember he had that uh provisional meeting and they were like, yeah, yeah, sure, this sounds great. Then when it, he went to for formal approval, they denied it and there was a couple of back and forth, we had to pay for a second review. And I don't know how many meetings he had with them or how many times he had to go back and forth, one or two or three. Then he had another meeting with them in the fall and then that's when we got this um kinda conditional approval. So it took, it's just taking forever and yeah.
Tom, do you have any comments?
I a hundred percent agree with you guys, I I was very confused when I took over and was looking into it even with you go before. Um, so we definitely need more comments with Spalding about this with engineer. I mean, he he does suggest a couple of other things, but that's something we can talk about more later.
And how it ties in also with the roof, how the roof remediation that they've done, so how that's working, so.
Yeah, I know, we have some ideas for ways we can catch that water and and help it drain better, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You don't have any dates, so on your calendar that?
No, I'll have to uh get back with you guys on that, so.
Okay, cause traditionally we've had it on a Thursday, like the third Thursday of a month or something?
The third Thursday, it's been every other, I think the next one won't be until um April, so I'd like to get something sooner than that. So I'll reach out to you all.
Okay.
And that could be, you can zoom in for that one.
For sure.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your review and consideration.
Anybody else have other?
Um, yes, I was concerned about a comment. Um, I saw a picture of him saying that the library was so dirty.
Yeah.
And I.
Yep, that that had to do with meeting rooms, that, and I don't, I don't know sincerely.
I think study room, I think study rooms.
Study rooms, I'm sorry, the study rooms, and I don't think it was so much that they were dirty, it's just those study rooms are in really bad shape right now.
Yeah.
They're well-worn.
Well-worn.
Just worn, not, yeah.
Not not physically dirty, cause I do walk the building every morning and check them and they, unless they were during like that week of December when we had all the teens here. Which could have been, cause that's probably one of them.
When they they were studying for finals, et cetera.
Yes, it's cause they're, they, there'll be hundreds and hundreds of teens a day.
You know, that's right. That's the only comment I've ever seen.
That's only time, yeah, that's the only comment we've had in in, and that was over that time period.
And Catherine followed up with that person and asked if she could be more, I think it was a she, could be more specific and take pictures or tell us exactly where and they never responded, so.
Could have been that they wanted a study room and it wasn't there.
I wouldn't be surprised if during that, there was another comment in the pack about the library being really loud. I suspect that these folks were visiting during that very high use time, when it was finals week and yeah, I mean, it was it was busy here and it was loud.
Do you open the rooms downstairs for them too?
Not downstairs, but we open a community room.
I knew that, yeah.
So I'm wondering if um it, we should probably put that in the space consideration, because I I think we want the library to be, to meet the needs of as many people as possible and it it's gonna be loud. And it's gonna be teens, so I think at some point you have to look at the sort of the smaller denominator of folks that might, we might need a quiet space being the smaller space. Which is flipped topsy-turvy from when it used to be and maybe some older expectations.
It's a continual tension for us, but the study rooms definitely need to be rehabbed, like repainted, re-carpeted, new furniture, they need to.
Do you think we require more, do we have too few?
We could, we could, if we had more, there was, it wouldn't be enough.
Okay.
We could never have enough study rooms, ever.
And the reason why you don't go downstairs is because there are teens and there'd be too many people, you have to work.
It's just too isolated, yeah, there's no staff down there.
Okay. You'd be cooking that. Sorry, I didn't say that.
Anyway, any further, other?
Uh, just to report that the uh friends of the library again had um a terrific sale last Saturday, just over five thousand pounds, which is amazing, so.
Good for them. Yeah, this just this past Saturday with the snow?
Yes.
No, it was two Saturdays.
Uh, but no, it was the eighth, two Saturdays, yeah.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Is that, is that two Saturdays ago or a week and a half ago, a week and a half ago?
Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah.
I have one question before we move on, our for our budget review session, who here wants the print version of the budget book? Usually we do a binder. I can send it out, I will send it out electronically. Two copies.
I'm ready to electronic.
Okay.
Never.
All right. Thank you for that.
Okay. We're gonna go into closed session unless somebody has anything else? Can I get a motion to move into a closed session?
So moved?
Second?
I'll second.
I get a motion to uh call the meeting back into general session, moved? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed. Uh, okay, so uh thanks everybody, uh our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March eighteenth. Uh, last call for any other business?
No, I plan to be there.
Great.
I be too.
It's a budget meeting, so.
Oh, that's right.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So so moved?
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed.